Okay, I will call to order this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee at 6:05 PM. Do notice having been posted. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed to acknowledge and permissible. We'll do a roll call of members present. Ms. Barrera.
Mr. Bensdamer.
Here.
Mr. Machado.
Here.
Ms. Solomon.
Here.
Mr. Bierra.
Here.
Also, and the chair is present. Also with us this evening, our superintendent of schools, Mr. Jeffrey Schoonover, our chief financial officer, Ms. Raquel Pellerin, and our director of curriculum, Ms. Elizabeth Haskell, and as always, our recording secretary, Mitch Marvin Macara. Could you please stand in the house? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Father, Fortitude, Justice, One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Please note that the next regularly scheduled meeting of this committee will be held on Tuesday, November 12th at 6:00 PM here in the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. And the first item on the agenda for this evening is our student representative report. Ryan, what you got?
Good evening, everyone. All right, so just jump right into things regarding performing arts. It's a busy, busy month for performing arts groups. So last week was the 51st Music Town Ball Performance. That was held last week, and then upcoming this week on Thursday is Music Pops Night, and this Saturday there is the Prague, which is going to be held at 1:00. To move on to sports, fall sports are winding down for the season, and during the competitions for teams, last few competitions, they are senior nights, so wishing the best love for seniors in their future plans. And then, as it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, many sports teams are representing, wearing pink, pink uniforms, selling like last week at the game, they were selling pink, pink bracelets, pink shirts, everybody was wearing pink, so just something nice, everybody wearing same colors made for a good cause. And then, in preparation for seniors' future plans, tomorrow night at the school, there is a financial aid night, so students, juniors, and seniors are allowed to come tomorrow at 6:00, where financially process will be discussed along with college admissions process. In the past few weeks, guidance counselors have been meeting individually with seniors as a lot of early application, early decision deadlines are set for November 1st, some earlier today, October 15th is some students' first deadline for some of the schools down south, so that is some things that the guidance counselors have been doing, working hard, helping everybody meet their deadlines and get opportunity for future plans. And that's, that's all I have. Oh, and then, we still had our homecoming dance, which was, which was fun, a lot of, a lot of students came, I think it was the first time in the past few years that that event was sold out, so it was good to see. That's, that's everything I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, the only, I think the only thing I would add, so tomorrow night is, as Ryan said, is the financial aid and college admissions night, and certainly geared for parents of juniors, probably more juniors than anything, knowing that they're, they'll be going into this process soon, but also seniors who are in the midst of completing their college admissions process right now. But really, any parent is welcome to come, so if there is a parent of a sophomore who's interested and wants to begin learning about it, any, any high school parent is, and their student are, welcome to attend that.
I think that's a great point, too, because FAFSA looks at prior, prior year, so if you actually want to try to plan ahead, maybe move some things around or make some decisions, it's actually sophomore year is kind of the last chance to do it in a way that will impact your freshman year of college financially, so the earlier the better, because it's so cheap, college tuition, it's really affordable, really affordable, I mean, it's not that long.
Yep, and finally, just add one thing to Ryan's. Last week, Senator Markey was making a brief visit to Somerset, and he wanted to attend our schools and, and do something with students, so even though it was, this was last Tuesday, and there was no school for students for the high school that day because of parent teacher conferences, members of the Student Advisory Council, along with some of our class presidents, and a group of similar students from the middle school gathered at the middle school, and just had a, about an hour-long discussion with Senator Markey. I don't know if Ryan, if there's anything you want to add, but I just wanted to say that our students, to no surprise, they were, they were excellent, and he remarked several times before he left how impressed he was by the 12 or 13 students who were present that day. It was nice, just nice opportunity for them to engage in a discussion with a US senator, but they were very impressive. Anything you want to add?
It was definitely, definitely a great opportunity, not only to hear his point, do you want certain topics, but along with some of the middle schoolers' views on certain topics that we talk about all the time here at the high school. And I also got to see the new middle school, which, first time seeing, was impressive, very impressive. That's right.
That's great. Thank you for coming in on your day off.
No worries.
Anyone have anything? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, move along. The next item on the agenda is, we talked about this last time when we did the building inspection tour, we noted that Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School had built, had donated fabulous trophy case, which is up by a lot to attract, and the purpose, I think specifically, is to house the plaques for the hallway that have been maybe tucked away, not on display, so that's, we're appreciative to them. So I would entertain a motion to accept the donation of the trophy case from Diamond Regional Vocational Technical High School.
So moved to second.
Motion by Mr. Machado and second by Mr. Bensdamer. Anything on discussion? I'll just add, we drafted a letter of appreciation, and we'll be sending that to them. Okay, nothing on discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted? Thank you. Thank you for drafting that, Robyn. The next item on the agenda is the assessment summary, and we are going to hold off on that item until the November meeting, so that that information can be presented alongside school improvement grants and those things, go together. Is there anything you want to add before we just?
No, super excited about it. Dr. Ralsford and I were actually talking about it today, and we, we're looking forward to it.
Great. Here all about it next, at next meeting. Okay, the next item on the agenda is, under new business, is discussion of the MCAS ballot question, which is question two? Which would make the grade 10 ELA math and grade 1 science MCAS exams, wouldn't take them away, but would make them no longer a requirement for graduation by stating that correctly?
Yes.
So this came up at our last meeting, and I don't know if, what are the wishes of the committee? Anyone want to make a recommendation, an endorsement?
Can I just give a little bit of background knowledge? So even though Ms. Haskell will be presenting the assessment information next time, just for this, for the 2024 data, just so we understand exactly what we're talking about here, our ELA results, and this is based on, let's see, 247 students who took the exam, so there are, these numbers might not line up exactly with what we've seen on the assessment results, because you could have had some students who did not take the exam for various reasons and are considered a not meeting right now, but they haven't actually taken the test. So just for the 247 students who completed the math MCAS exam this past year, we had just about 55% of them either exceeded or, or met the standard. And we usually consider that as passing, but for graduation purposes, it's a, anyone who scores, who has a score above a 485, so 46, 486 and above, and a 46 is like halfway through the partial meeting category. So we had 11% of our students, and this is just in math, 11% of our students were exceeded the standard, a little over 43% met the standard, 41% of our students partially met, and then 4.5% did not meet. Of those, of that 41% who partially met, the upper half of that, so, so the partially meeting, it's, I should have, I should have a display in front of you, so scores 530 and above is exceeding, 500 to 530 is meeting, 470 to 500 is partially meeting, and then below 470 is not. So these 30-point scales. So for that partially meeting, if you cut it in half, and just look at the upper half, 485, 486 to 499, they, they meet the graduation requirement. So they, they have a partially meeting score, but they, but they meet the graduation requirement without any, with having to do nothing else. The bottom half of the partially meeting category, so between a 470 and a 485, they are placed on an EPP, a proficiency plan?
Education.
Educational proficiency plan. Proficiency plan. So they have to complete a certain, they can either retake the test, and if they get a qualifying score, then obviously they, they meet the graduation requirement, or they can fulfill some certain coursework. And if they fulfill certain courses within Somerset Berkeley, then they, they are all set for graduation. So usually, if you, if they fall within that category, well, just about, I want to say all students, but pretty much all students meet the graduation requirement. So for us, at Somerset Berkeley, last year, for last year's group, we're talking 4.5% of our students who took the test are currently not meeting, because it's 11 students. And when I look at, if I'm looking at the English scores, the LA scores, they're very similar, 10% of our students exceeded, 47% of our students met the standard, so 57% met the standard, but then it's for the students who scored a 486 or above, it's 83% of our students, just they passed, they met the requirement. An additional 13% of our students fell within that 470 to 485, so they have, they will pass with that EPP, and then it's 4% 10, 10 students who need to retake the exam and, and pass it that way. So we're talking 90, 95, 96% of our students have already met the, the graduation requirement, even though 55, 56% of our students on average have met or exceeded the standard, it's 96% have met the graduation requirement. So just, just to give that layer, because I know we don't really talk about that part, where we just look at the four categories, but just to provide a little bit of some background information for you. And, and Mrs. Andrews, as you mentioned, I think there's this, some have the misunderstanding that a yes vote means MCAS is gone. It doesn't, MCAS remains, it's just whether or not it's considered part of the graduation requirement. So, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One, I'm really never worried about towns like Somerset, because most of our students do quite well, as Mr. Schoonover mentioned. If the MCAS is no longer a requirement for the graduation, my only concern will be, how do we, let's just say, some school districts, and I've known this in the past, because even when I was a child, I saw some students just get pushed along, and here's a paper, off you go, it's no longer our headache. I think the MCAS, and No Trial Left Behind, and all these other programs were to avoid districts not like ours to hold them accountable. My question is, if the MCAS is not a tool that's going to hold, let's say, the student accountable, because obviously it's not going to prevent them, what is the purpose of the MCAS at that point? Is it just to hold the district accountable? So that's why I'm not, I don't think I have enough of information to vote yes on something like this, is because I want to know how is this going to affect school districts? Obviously, there are some students that are horrible when it comes to a test, and they are not able to pass that test, and they're being held behind. I don't think that is fair as well, but I'm glad that there is a waiver process that the schools, that the schools can either request, but I don't know, I'm having a hard time of districts just rolling students from grade to grade to grade, and in the long run, we're failing our students. Especially, they pass high school, they go into college, and then they really, because I hate to say this, a college might not have the standards, but now we're sending kids to college who are paying big bucks and can't make it. So that's where I'm struggling with it, so I don't even know how I'm going to vote at the, at the ballot box, so I haven't got to that point yet, so I could never make a recommendation here to the public, because I'm still trying to weigh my options, so.
Mr. Bierra.
Well, I, I don't typically agree with Mr. Machado.
You do.
No, I do, I do. I, I have to tell you that I am very concerned with this, because I think our district is fine, we're addressing those things, we have the students that need the assistance, we hope that we're giving it to them to get them to, but look at the, the bigger picture, and you have other school districts that are just waiting to be able to cut some money out of the budget, or they need to cut some, they don't have enough money to cover what they have, oh, here we can cut a position, and, and you're going to be, you're going to leave, students are going to be not well protected, I think would be the word. I see this, this is not the end-all, the MCAS testing, but I think it was a, kind of the beginning of moving forward to bring all the students up, and I think by, right now, not having an alternative to that, or there's some language in one of the documents we had about that, we don't have any alternatives for that, so the students, as Mr. Machado said, are going to get pushed along, because they don't want to take the test, they don't want to take the test and fail, you don't need the tests. I think it's, for me, it's, you know, I'm a, I'm a solid no, so.
I don't know.
You know, now that is, I grew up in, in a large city school, so I know how things can work, as well, so.
Can I, can I put someone on the spot?
Okay.
Mr. Bierra.
I agree with both of your points. I, I, there needs to be some kind of accountability to hold students where, because like, like you were saying, other school districts, students seem to get pushed along, if they, if they're not passing, you know, you get that extra paper, like you were talking about, get that extra credit, and, and you can, you can get through, and then, once you get to college, you pay that money, and if you're not ready, then it's going to be a big shock. So I, I, I also agree that should be known.
I'm kind of in between, so my daughter is a COVID kid, so she did not have to pass MCAS. I mean, she's always passed before, so it wasn't an issue, but she didn't have to, because of, it was COVID, so, and she's in college, she's in her junior year, and doing fine. But then, you know, I have a son who is the complete opposite of my daughter, and really struggling to have to pass MCAS, because he's not a great test taker, so kind of, I, I kind of see the both sides of it, so I'm not quite sure, yeah, one way or the other.
I'll be, I'll be the contrary, because, I, I think that, while I think that ballot measures are not the best way to make education policy in general, I think that there are fewer and fewer states that require essentially that sort of like exit exam, if you will, to, no, Massachusetts is consistently ranked the highest in the nation in terms of education, so, but I, I do struggle with having a student's, I struggle with the validity of a lot of standardized testing in terms of, does it measure what it purports to, and does a one-day test really demonstrate what a student knows and can do? And I think there are, there are limitations to MCAS, I don't know that it is indicative of what students can do. I think that their four-year career in high school, you know, is, is a far better way to ascertain their, you know, their preparation for whatever their post-secondary pursuits are, so I think there are a lot of limits with it, and I think this frankly comes with some frustration at the Department of Ed for sort of maybe not being responsive to calls for reform in this area. I've seen in the district I worked in previously, students take the test five times and miss by two points, and that's kind of heartbreaking, and it's not for lack of effort by the student, the family, or the staff who are working with that student, so I just think that there are a lot of limitations to it. I share concerns about, okay, then what is the standard, but I think, at least from my seat here in Somerset, I think we have local graduation requirements that I feel really good about. I think that if students attain, they're taking four years of, and not just taking four years, but working through four years of math, English, their social studies, science, and their other requirements, I, I feel like that is a much more comprehensive, holistic appraisal of what students know and can do. And I think that it tends to, for lack of a better word, punish maybe students who, who struggle with standardized testing. And yes, there are alternate assessments, and yes, there are some waivers, not every district is in the same position to be able to sort of like cohort students that way to make those appeals successful. So those, those are my concerns. My worry, my, the cynical part of me worries very much that if they're going to keep the exam, but if it's, you know, if a student says, it doesn't matter for me, I, I would probably not exert my best effort, you know, and then will that be sort of, well, this might be too strong a word, but weaponized against districts? So how is Desi going to use this information, right? And if students aren't maybe as motivated to do their very best that day, because they know for them, it's not, you know, crucial in terms of graduation, the accountability part of this I worry about for districts. So that's the cynical reason why I'm a little bit like, maybe we should keep it. But in terms of like benefits to students, I think we have great teachers who do great work over the course of four years, I have a lot more faith in that than I do in a test, a standardized test that is sort of, you know, of dubious value, I think, so that's just, I don't know if anyone else has anything. We don't need to seek a vote, I think it's just, it's, I think it's more of making folks aware of the question, and, and it is complicated, and, you know, folks will make the best judgment they can when you show up and.
The only thing I would say to the public, if you do not educate yourself, don't vote either way, because I would hate someone to go in there uneducated and just check a box, one or the other, and it may go against what they actually may believe if they didn't educate themselves on it. That would be my own recommendation.
And I think a lot of resources sometimes go into testing that, if we assume that its intentions for folks' time and resources go into testing, that could be used, I think, more effectively to support kids. And yes, that means you're, you're sort of having faith in people to do the right thing, but I think, I know here we will do that, so it's a lot of testing for a lot of kids, it's a lot of time, I don't know, that's just.
But I, I am going to mention one thing, I think this is a failure of the DESI, you know, when people come out and put a ballot question, it's because DESI did not listen to people and continue to go on the same course as they have been over and over again. When people get tired of something because they feel like no one's listening to them, they take the measure. 90% of the ballots, I mean, ballot questions that are put to the public is not always a good thing. It's just because one or two people deleted, and now they got the enough signatures, so I think, you know, that's why question one, and later on in our resolution, I do support an alternative, but, so that's, just as an FYI, I, I, I think this is really a situation that could have been avoided if DESI had dealt with it among themselves, probably when it came to this, so.
I was just going to add a couple of things. So first, the Superintendent's Association did vote to withstand on this, and they voted to support a no vote, just with the, the premise that DESI really needs to go back and look at making a better test. And, and I was looking at some recent test questions, and there were some, there were some test questions in math and ELA that I thought were very good questions, and then there are others. Like there was one, I think it was with 2023, one of the high school questions, it was, it was really, what is the difference between a rational and an irrational number? And we're all well-educated people here. When is the last time where any adult had to know the difference between a rational and irrational number? And, and how, how was that important? You know, and for someone who took many, many math classes in college, that was never relevant to me, and it's never been relevant in my working adult life. So there, there were just some questions, too, that were asking like, why? You know, what's the point here? So creating a test that really addresses what we want students to be able to demonstrate before they leave high school, I, I think maybe looking, my, my personal opinion is revamping that. But to the accountability comments that were made, it's not necessarily related to this, but I'll just give an example for South Elementary, last year, 2023 results, we had a couple of students who, in a, in a subgroup, who opted not to take the test, because two students in a subgroup just determined not to take the test, that subgroup's participation fell below 95%. South Elementary last year, likely, I can't, you know, we have no guarantee of this, but they were on the bubble of being a school of recognition. They had all of the numbers that qualified them to be a school of recognition, but because two students in a subgroup did not take the test, it dropped them into, from basically a, a high, a level of high distinction to a school on watch, or whatever the category was, because of this small opt-out by two kids. And with a 95% participation rate, anything below 95% participation, you're a, you're a school of intervention, needing intervention, or something like that. So I would assume that's going to happen throughout the state, so for accountability, I don't know how it's going to impact us. You know, we might have just a statewide system of schools that are, need intervention because the participation doesn't reach the 95% threshold. I, I thought about that, I wonder, but I don't, I don't know. Have any, anything to add, Ms. Haskell?
No, we had this discussion, actually, I have a, I have a daughter who's going to get to vote for the first time this year, so it's an exciting time, and so she got her mail-in ballot at school, and so we had a conversation, it was not dissimilar to this, and because, you know, she's like, okay, how am I voting on this? I said, I don't know, I don't know, how, how are you voting on this? So we talked a little bit about all of the, the things that you laid out, and, you know, it's, it's a good conversation, and it's an opportunity to keep the conversation going, you think, and, you know, we, the outcome we're looking for. And, you know, we, the outcome we're looking for is for, you know, for us to realize our vision to graduate, right? So so that we can have these conversations with our kids who graduate and they're really thinking about it and becoming responsibly young people who are going to move us into the future.
Thanks, everyone. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion on future use of Somerset Berkeley Regional High School as a voting. I actually asked this to be put on the agenda. Because I had concerns myself about particularly for the primary in September, some of the logistical concerns in terms of. There's tends to be low voter turnout, but it has the impact on the school logistically in terms of especially the high school. Kids try to come to school to park and then having to park somewhere else. To accommodate voting, which is very important, but that was one of my concerns was just the logistics. And then myself personally, the other reason I wanted us to begin to talk about this is that I have concerns about. Given how contentious politics in this country is and some of the behavior that we've seen around elections. I have real concerns about having voting in schools, period. I know that that tends to be the default place in most communities because it tends to be the place that's, you know, can accommodate it. That's just my, so that's, I wanted to put it on the agenda, bring it up for discussion and open it up to other folks. Or maybe I'm.
Well, I'll say I'm in agreement with this agenda about specifically the the our situation in the high school being used in that. I know in September, school was in session and it was an issue for students and parking. They had to park elsewhere, and I think, pardon me if I'm wrong, some of them got tickets that were taken back, but they got tickets for parking. I think our responsibility needs to be to the students that we presented parking passes to, for them to be able to park and us to provide. Parking for those students to get to school and get to school on time. I think voter, voting at the school should be a secondary thing, but our responsibility should be to the students and and being able to find a place to park. I'm kind of surprised by that issue in September. I don't know what Somerset, being from, I don't know what Somerset's other options are for voting, but I don't know.
I I'm going to disagree with both my colleagues. You know, when I was a little kid, I was always very proud of walking down Ferry Street to John J. Dorr's school with my parents or with my father so he could vote. And I remember especially my father being a first general, he was, he was the first American citizen of my family. Because he was born in Portugal and he was very proud to vote. He taught me as I was going down to on Ferry, well, we were walking down Ferry, how important it was to vote. I've never missed an election because of that. So there's, but the other thing is on November eighth. There were many November eights throughout my school year that it was a no day for school. We choose to have a half a day where we have these problems, but in my, and the only reason why I know this is because November eighth is my birthday. And many times on Election Day, I would have it off. Because that is the correct way to do it. Voting is extremely important. Making sure that we have a safe place for the people of Somerset to come and vote should be priority number one. Students should have the day off. We have snow days. We have all these other days that we work around our calendar. Election Day is extremely important in having one location for all of our senior citizens, because this is another thing. A lot of people in many different parts of the cities, especially cities, I vote here, no, I vote over there. Which precinct do I go to? Which, where do I go? Because that's how I remember when I first ran in two thousand six, I had people going to Wilbur while I was standing, and they were supposed to come to the middle school. Because they were in the wrong precinct. So I think having one build in. So for me, I will always support elections at our school, but it should be a note, it should be a day off of the students. And then you don't have these issues where it's a contest, you know, people are upset about the politics, right, left, and all of that. So I I disagree with you. I think the school is the proper place for, government buildings are the proper place for election and learn. Hopefully, students are coming in with their parents so they can be instilled on how important it is in the election like my father did for me. So because I can tell you right now, too many kids who are eighteen are not voting. Because they haven't seen that. So I I I will never vote for our high school. Or any school in this case not to be used for a a public polling place.
So I'll say Berkeley uses our school. We only have. Our school to choose from, and we don't have school that day.
And we don't have school for the general in November, but I do, I I think the primary was kind of a hot mess. It was a lot of inconvenience to our students for a very small turnout, and I want, I value voting. I also, I mean, I'm gonna throw it out there. I wonder might the middle school, the brand new middle school be? Because this is also a Somerset Berkeley Regional High School. Berkeley votes in the, in Berkeley K to eight. And might it be appropriate now that the middle school is finished to have Somerset vote there? I'm just throwing that out there. I I even with school closed, I still, I, as someone who thinks about school security in a different capacity. And absolutely values voting and doesn't want, I don't want to make voting harder for anyone. But I think our priority has to be, so maybe we either have to think about. Is the middle school, which would be a conversation with another committee, a MUP and the town. Would that be an option? Or if not, then I think we need to look at our calendar when there's a primary. And I can't support having school open when there are elections anymore. So I agree with Mr. Machado that you either, you have to close school. And, you know, I'm not in charge of the middle school or the other, I'm not, I don't have a say in K to eight, but. For me, for the high school, it's sort of been a concern for a while, just in general, safety and logistics and a lot of things. And for me, the primary was kind of like the last, like, why are we doing it this way? So that's why I just wanted to bring it up for discussion, and I don't know. If anyone else who was here that day has thoughts on that, or Mr. Viera?
I mean, I I agree with both your points about security, but also it needs to be a place accessible to all of Somerset for voting. But I'm just trying to think back to the election day. I do remember there being some parking issues with students for because of their. People coming to vote parking in the student parking lot, leaving spots open for them, but also people holding signs for people coming in. They were there as we were walking in school. You're walking by people holding up signs, which, like you said, it could become a security concern.
And I don't know if there are any other logistics. I know sometimes setting up the night before, this building gets a lot of heavy use. I don't know if there's any impact with the setup.
This primary election was definitely a lesson learned, and that's not something that we're going to do again, whether it's at this school or at the middle school or some other location for. That primary election where the ballots are open, I think, from eight AM until eight PM. For a day like that, there has to be, we have to have no school. And then we always try to, even though it's just one, one school in one district. So for Somerset, the other four schools, which are really are a different district. Those may just, you know, have school that day and then unfortunately, the high, the high school just ends one day after. The other four schools. And we we try to keep the two in lockstep with each other, but that's, we saw that that's not really possible any longer when it comes to this. There are, there is another election that occurs in this building in the spring, the town election. And that is one where the polls open at noon and close at eight. And we have an, and we have an early release day whenever that occurs, and that has not been an issue up to this. Point in the past. So I don't know if you feel the same way about having those, that town election that begins at noon. Because I I think Ryan on that day, we have, it's an early release and I think we either, we don't serve lunches at all, or maybe there's like a bag lunch option or something.
On your way out, yeah.
Yeah, if someone wants it, but so we're not using the cafeterias because they would set up in the caf in the morning, getting ready for the the noon balance. So that is, that's the second time every year where schools, our ins and outs, bless you, during an election.
Well, I think, I don't think there's a, we didn't really take a vote, but I think it's something that as we are building calendars going forward and thinking about some of those logistics. I just wanted to put it out there as to the forefront to be thinking about, all, for all of us to be thinking about that. Because I think that I'm going to make sure, first and foremost, that our kids can get to school and be safe. Coming and going and, you know, we shouldn't put obstacles to that. Un, un, unintentionally, of course. So perhaps there's some creative things we could think about moving forward. Anyone else? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the staffing update, Mr. Schooloper.
Yes, so you have a few. There are a few appointments. I do want to call attention to Jennifer Lozaro. Who will begin on Monday as our Human Resources Coordinator. And was not here, I'm not sure, maybe it was on the previous agenda, but Jesse Edwelt, who has been our HR coordinator for the past three years. She is stepping down from her position. We're very fortunate to have Jennifer Zorro. Step into that role. Jen has a very extensive career in HR. We're excited to have her join the team. And for those of you who know Jen, she is, she's a Somerset resident. Her two children recently, in in recent years graduated from the high school. She was the former president of the Friends of Music, so she she's very familiar with our school system. And we're just really pleased to have someone with her experience join us in that capacity.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda on the business and financial matters. The first item is to vote on updated assessment numbers for the towns of Somerset and Berkeley. I don't know, Miss Paul, do you just want to sort of remind folks as to why we are updating that assessment?
Sure, at a, at a previous meeting, we brought forward the. Adjustments to both member towns due to chapter seventy, the final chapter seventy numbers. We were asked to bring the revised assessment forward for a final vote. So you can see that there is a change to the chapter seventy, which resulted in a change to the total assessment. Although it doesn't change the bottom line of the operational budget. When we bring forward the budget adjustments at the next meeting, you'll see an adjustment between the member towns and chapter seventy to align with the assessment sheet.
So translating more money from the state, a little less money coming out of the pockets of the taxpayers of the two towns. A smidge, but we'll take it. It's in, at least in the right direction, right? Okay. So with that background, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five gross operating budget. In the amount of twenty one million, six hundred and twenty four thousand, ninety four dollars, with a net operating budget of nineteen million, two hundred and sixty five thousand, nine hundred and twenty five dollars. The total operating assessment is twelve million, forty one thousand, nine hundred and sixty seven dollars, of which nine million, two hundred and thirty two thousand, five hundred and thirty seven. Is assessed to Somerset and two million, eight hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and thirty is assessed to Berkeley. A separate capital assessment in the amount of two million, one hundred and fifty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars will be assessed as follows. One million, six hundred and thirty three thousand, eight hundred and eighty one dollars to Somerset and five hundred and twenty four thousand, two hundred and eighty eight dollars to Berkeley. The total assessments to the towns of Somerset and Berkeley being fourteen million, two hundred and thousand, one hundred and thirty six dollars. Of which ten million, eight hundred and sixty six thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars will be assessed to Somerset. And three million, three hundred and thirty three thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars to Berkeley.
So moved.
Second motion by Mr. Machado, second by Ms. Pereira. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor. Opposed, so voted.
I don't think I got all those numbers.
Oh, I don't know how you do that. Okay, great. And I think that those, that'll be just as a credit in the, in an upcoming monthly payment.
Yes.
Great. Okay, the next item on the agenda are the GASP seventy four and GASP seventy five reports for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And these don't require a vote, but there's information in your packet, and perhaps you could give us a summary overview.
So this is GASP seventy four and seventy five are requirements that are related to OPEC or other post employment benefits. Last year, the district had a full valuation, which is more democra, demographics and more depth. This year is a roll forward year or an interim year, and the real focus is about. The year end asset value as well as your annual required contribution, which could be referred to as the ARC payment or the ADC. That being said, there are just a few things to point out better than anticipated with the valuation, about thirty seven thousand dollars more, which is really good. Your funding ratio has increased from seven point oh three to ten point three two. With the commitment to add additional dollars to the annual payments. We're projected to increase another few percentages to get as close to twelve and a half percent. So it's all really positive and moving in the right direction.
Questions?
Just for GASP, it's Governmental Accounting Standard Board, just in case if anybody is trying to figure out what GASP means. That's the, the definition of that. The firm, give a point.
Mr. Fenstermaker, are you an OPEC person?
Yes.
Great job, great job, Mr.. And all seriousness, I I think the committee's done a great job of increasing our OPEC contribution, and I would like to thank Mr. Fenstermaker and his predecessor, Ms. Gabliardi, who kind of really pushed us to do that, to pay attention to that, so thank you. Very.
And also our administration was always urging us, Mr. Taro and Pellerin, you know, I think, you know, and even our auditors, you know. Who constantly say we should add some more money, so continue pushing not only this board but future boards as well.
And then the next item on the agenda on the business and financial is the September financial statement.
So in summary, this is July to September, and really our focus has been aligning with our FTEs. And getting our encumbrances that are necessary, necessary for the opening of school. This too will be part of a budget amendment at the next meeting, as we finalize, I believe there's a.
I believe there's a vote on tonight for contractual agreements, um, so we will finalize everything and bring forward a budget amendments.
Anyone have any questions about the September FinStat? Thank you. Um, let's see. We're at six fifty-five. We are supposed to start our joint meeting at seven with Somerset. I'm looking to see if there's anything we can do in five minutes.
About a respite.
You wanna recess?
Yeah, I wanna recess.
Okay. So we'll recess for five minutes. Do you need a motion for that?
Yep.
No, you can just do it? Oh, we're recessing then, for five minutes? And then we will, um, come back together at seven for the joint meeting with the Somerset School Committee. The regional school committee will enter back into session.
Yep. At this time, I want to call the Somerset Public Schools School Committee meeting to order at seven oh-four. Due notice have been posted. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit this meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings and transmissions may be made, whether perceived or unperceived, and by those present. By roll call, uh, just, uh, for the public's knowledge, uh, Ms. Ashley, Ms. Ashley reached out to me today. She's under the weather. After speaking to her, I'm glad she's not here, because we don't want her here, um, with that cough. So by roll call, uh, Ms. Corville?
Present.
Ms. Ferreira?
Present.
Mr. Gore?
Present.
And the vice chair is also present. And with us, we have our superintendent of schools, Jeffrey Schoonover, our chief financial officer, Ms. Perrin, um, uh, director of curriculum, Ms. Haskell, and our recording secretary, Robin Bakara. Thank you.
Sure.
And our first item is to, I'm gonna entertain a motion, uh, to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-three, to discuss strategy with respect, uh, to collective bargaining and/or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on our bargaining and litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees ASME, paraprofessionals and cafeteria, well, paraprofessionals, cafeteria contracts, and the Somerset Teachers Association, MOA, STA, memorandum of agreement and a side letter agreement. In pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-two, to conduct strategy session in preparation and negotiations with non, sorry, I'm gonna scroll down, non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiation with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools salary increase.
So I give you a rule, Jen?
I'll sit back. We have a motion made by Ms. Ferreira, seconded by Ms. Corville. By roll call, Mr. Gore?
Aye.
Ms. Corville?
Aye.
Ms. Ferreira?
Aye.
And the vice chair votes aye, and the Somerset School Committee will return to public, uh, will return to open session.
And at this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees ASME, paraprofessional and cafeteria contracts, and the Somerset Teachers Association, STA, memorandum of agreement and side letter agreement, and pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A-two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, superintendent of schools salary increase.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferreira and seconded by Mr. Masato. Um, I'll do a roll call, members present, uh, Ms. Ferreira?
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker? Mr. Masato?
Aye.
Ms. Solomon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And the committee will return to open session. The region, um, is back into open session.
And the K.A. will, has also returned to open session?
And the first item on the agenda would be, um, the superintendent's salary increase. So, um, on behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to approve a six-point-five percent salary increase for Superintendent Schoonover for the period of July one, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and this would be retroactive to July one, twenty twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ferreira and seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, is there anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
On behalf of the K.A., I will entertain a motion to approve a six-point-five percent increase, salary increase for the superintendent, for Superintendent Schoonover for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four, through Ju- June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, retroactive to July first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Ms. Corville, seconded by Mr. Gore. Any discussion? Uh, obviously, um, this increase is based on the evaluation, um, that, um, we just had from Mr. Schoonover, uh, a couple of months ago, so, uh, by, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero.
And then I'd just add for public knowledge, um, that that, uh, decision was rendered not only in terms of his evaluation, but also in terms of, um, some careful consideration with, um, what superintendents in nearby comparable districts, um, are compensated for, and also for his extensive, um, years of service and commitment to, um, both Somerset and Somerset-Berkley. Um, in full recognition also, um, that he serves two school committees, um, and two districts, and that that is, um, not a completely unique arrangement in the Commonwealth, but, um, certainly, um, an unusual one and a very challenging one. And we are very grateful, um, for his leadership. Okay. Next item? Okay, next item on the agenda, I would enter, on behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to approve the cafeteria contract, uh, for the period of August first, twenty twenty-four, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. So moved. Motion by Ms. Ferreira and seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, is there anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
On behalf of the K.A., I will entertain a motion to approve the cafeteria contract from the, for the period of August first, twenty twenty-four, through July thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Ms. Corville, seconded by Mr. Gore. Any discussion? With none, uh, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Four zero.
Next, on behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to approve the paraprofessional contract for the period of August first, twenty twenty-four, through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. So moved. Motion by Ms. Ferreira and seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, is there anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
On the K.A.'s side, I'll entertain a motion to approve the paraprofessional's contract for the period of August first, twenty twenty-four, through July thirty-one, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Ms. Corville, seconded by Mr. Gore. Any discussion? With none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four zero.
Um, and finally, on this matter, I would, on behalf of the region, I would entertain a motion to, um, accept the mentoring side letter of agreement, uh, with the STA for the period of September first, twenty twenty-four, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. So moved. Motion by Ms. Ferreira and seconded by Mr. Fenstermaker, is there anything on discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
And on the K.A., I will entertain a motion to accept the mentoring side letter of agreement with the Somerset Teachers Association, uh, for the period of September first, twenty twenty-four, through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
We have a motion made by Ms. Corville, seconded by, um, Mr. Gore. Any discussion? With none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Four zero. And...
Next on the agenda for the, um, joint meeting, um, under new business professional development plans, are we doing that, or are we putting that till next?
No, that's...
That's, that's the one, okay, I just wanna make sure. All right. Ms. Haskell? Just one more project. Or just a minute? I do have it open, oh, here we go. I paused, and then I didn't know how to get off this. Thank you. Okay, so, we're actually gonna start at home. So this was a collaborative effort, um, I am the only one here presenting, but, um, as you can see, uh, Principal Stephanie Brown, Alexa Cabral, who was our instructional coach for the elementary, um, Stephanie Brown is the principal at South Elementary School, Alice Ferris is the social studies content coordinator for, um, Somerset-Berkley Regional High School, um, Nikki Merrick-Liata, um, is a chorus teacher for Somerset Public Schools, Erica Pereira and Matt Talbot are both assistant principals of Somerset-Berkley Regional High School, so this was a collaborative effort, um, of our team. And, and they know I'm sharing it, so, and we even have a little picture.
So, I'm just gonna
Please.
Step in for one second. UMass Darmstadt just launched its own doctorate program, uh, that started this, I think they announced it in the summer, late summer is that, uh, and, uh, it just kicked off in September, and there are about twenty-five or so people in the cohort. Seven of the members in this cohort are educators in Somerset and Somerset-Berkley, by far, or maybe not by far, but definitely the largest contingent, uh, from, uh, from any school district. As I said earlier, we kind of consider ourselves as one, even though, um, we're, we're not necessarily, but, uh, so, we're very proud, uh, that, I, I, I personally am very proud that we have seven people who, uh, stepped up and are seeking their doctorate, and they're able to work together, uh, on some different projects. I can't wait to see their problems of practice and, and how it unfolds, uh, within our schools. But, just as a introduction.
Thank you. So we are using data to inform our professional development plan. Um, one of the things that was really fun as we started to work on this was, um, you don't, you don't often slow down to think about all the data that is informing the decisions, uh, or that are informing the decisions that you're making, um, and, and we have a lot. And so, um, we really are committed to inclusive, student-centered learning, um, and, uh, our vision is really to personalize learning, um, not just for our students, but also for our, um, staff. So we're gonna go ahead and get started with our elementary plan, pathway. So culture, connection, and community building, um, we are really committed, and as you may remember, we have done some, uh, responsive classroom training over the years, um, and so these are some of the topics. Uh, one of the other things that, that has really come to light is that we are always doing a lot all at once. Um, and our principals, um, and assistant principals are working hard every day alongside our teachers, um, to really embed this work in what we're doing, but we wanna support the professional learning of all of our teachers, and that embedded piece and the ongoing professional learning is what we're really committed to, and we're trying to find as many ways as we can to fit that in, because we don't really have that many professional development days. So, um, this year, I think that, um, I think it's actually three for the elementary, um, because one of them is a planning day. So, uh, these are some of the pieces of the professional learning that we're doing, and our principals and assistant principals are working really hard, um, to bring it all together during our common planning time. So the grade-level common planning time that's happening, our principal or assistant principal is part of that work. And so, again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep scrolling. Um, so there are connections with the, um, DESI teacher rubric, so there's a new teacher rubric and teacher, teaching standards, and these are our focus standards for this year, and really connecting the professional learning with those teaching standards. Um, and then this is what our format and schedule looks like. So our common planning time, uh, and our teaching and students block, those are the, the blocks where our, um, uh, principals and assistant principals really are instructional leaders and working alongside our teachers to provide them the, the support that they need. They are also working to connect and tie in faculty meetings, so that anything that can be an email is sent as an email, and, uh, the opportunities for professional learning are happening again during that, uh, contractual time, really. Early release days, again, we have four this year, um, but one of them is a, an elementary planning day, so, uh, we've just had our September Day, October thirtieth is on the horizon, and, um, and then there's another one in January. Of course, we have our, um, Election Day Ed Camp is also happening, and that is a full PD day, and we love that day, um, but, uh, it is, uh, more of a, it is an all-day voice and choice, uh, situation, um, so teachers get to pick, um, although we are building in some vertical, um, meetings, so that our fifth and sixth grade teams can talk to each other and talk a little bit about what's happening and, um, how we might support each other, and then our eighth and ninth grade teams will also be working together, um, at the start of the day. Uh, you may remember, uh, we did have to make some adjustments in staffing this year, uh, but Alexa Cabral has been named as instructional coach, and she's working with our principals and our assistant principals, but most importantly, alongside our teachers, and, um, really helping to support, um, the work that we're doing this year. And I'll talk a little bit more in a few minutes about, uh, our teacher induction program, um, and then the opposite, opportunities outside of the school day, um, I will refer to those later, I'm gonna keep scrolling. So, uh, we are rolling out in, at the elementary, a new, uh, math program, um, but it's a direct connect with Building Thinking Classrooms, and Peter Liliodal is an author, um, who, uh, has a book called Building Thinking Classrooms, uh, and he also is going to be, uh, Rocket PD is a company that offers live professional development with educational groups, and Peter Liliodal is one of them, and we, um, sent out the invitation to all of our teachers who might wanna participate. So it's an evening course, it's with Peter himself, um, and it's five weeks, uh, two hours, uh, per session, and so, uh, we're gonna try this new model and, and see how it goes, and we're kind of looking forward to hearing about it. All of our levels have, um, at, at some, uh, at each level, we have had either an administrator or several administrators and teachers participate, so it's even more meaningful as the teachers and the leaders are working side by side, um, and moving forward, so, um, we're really looking forward to that. And then our specialized PD, so we have our specialists, um, who are, uh, classroom teachers, but they also are in need of their own professional learning related to their content area, um, and so, uh, we do provide those opportunities throughout the course of the year, um, even some asynchronous learning modules that we have bought for our, um, art department, um, at the elementary they had requested, and, um, even at our middle school. And so we, we're really wanting to provide the voice and choice for our adults and their learning, uh, not just our kids. So the middle school and the high school, um, have a little bit of a different approach. We have offered pathways to our faculty and staff, and, uh, reaching We have offered pathways to our faculty and staff, and reaching and teaching all learners is one of the pathways, and integrating social and emotional learning into classroom culture is the other one. So there are, you may look at them and say, there are only two, but if you think about the amount of staff that we have, and again, we're using data to inform our PD pathways, these seem to be the ones that, between the surveys that we give and our observations, that would be the most meaningful to our teachers. And so we have chosen those, I'm just gonna, sorry, scroll up a little bit, and we've got really a make and take workshop model is what we're looking for at the secondary. We want teachers to go in, learn, and be able to take what they've learned and implement it tomorrow if they chose to. And then when we come back together, we talk about our experience with the one thing that we tried between the last session and the next session, and then how did that impact our students and their learning, and then what's our next step? So that's really the model that teachers appreciate, I think we all do, that it's worth your time, and so we're really focused on those goals, the process, and then one of the things that I really liked, so I'm gonna click through really quickly, but, and hope I can get back to where I was. One of the things that I really liked, we're working with a team that's providing modeling, but they also have taken some of the work that we're doing in district and really made the work that they're doing connected to our goals and our work and our strategic plan, and so this is their presentation, and they included all of these pieces. So again, we're not just doing the learning, but we're also making the connections between our district strategic planning, our vision of the graduate, our school improvement plans, because they're all connected. And so it's one of the fancy things I wanted to make sure I shared because I really appreciated that. Sorry, lost my page. And then our SEL pathway, again, I may have mentioned in the past that we, Wayfinder is our SEL curriculum for our tier one instruction, which everybody gets, but we're also doing some work with a woman named Donna Tobin, who is an SEL coordinator in Massachusetts for a different school district, but she does some work with Athena K-12, and she has been outstanding in the work that she has done with our team last year here at the high school, so we have expanded the work that she's done, and she's working with both our middle school and our high school this year, along with Sarah Starr, who is the Wayfinder PD provider. And last but not least, so we have some additional pathways at the high school, they have a larger team that works here, and we, again, you may recall that we, this is year two of our PD pathways at the high school. So teachers participated, some teachers participated in the SEL pathway last year, and they would have gone into a different pathway this year, and so this is a new cohort and new crop who are focused on social emotional learning. We haven't, we did have Building Thinking Classrooms last year, which was facilitated by Andy Lawrence, who is one of our content coordinators, he's the math content coordinator. Yes, it sounds familiar, it's what we just talked about when we were talking about the elementary and Peter Liliodal. This year, we have, again, some of our teachers that work here who are facilitating Building Thinking Classrooms, the humanities edition. So Peter Liliodal hasn't even written this book yet, but his is focused on math. What these teachers are doing is taking the concepts, which are research-based, and applying them to the humanities and really sharing their experiences and their strategies for Building Thinking Classrooms. So they, we have a really special and amazing team, and they are doing the work to provide these opportunities. So that's Christina Bergmeier, Ben Chase, and Emily Cabral may be working with them also. And then we have Matt Croft, who is offering our using technology to enhance learning. So technology is not there just for the sake of technology or because we all have Chromebooks now, it's really how can we use and leverage those technology tools to take our learning to the next level? So Matt Croft, this is year two of him also facilitating this session. And then reaching and teaching all learners, again, you may recall, we did work with Throughline last year, and we have continued that work. Last year, it was focused on freshmen, and this year it's focused on sophomores. And so we have been looking at our data from the freshman cohort, and some of that data has been informing the work that we're going to do with this teacher, or with this teacher cohort who are teaching sophomores. And again, we have our focus areas, our objectives, and. Finally, and again, we're, we're, last but not least, again, special education. We have mentioned before that the new IEP is rolling out this year, and so this is, this is an opportunity for our special education teachers. They are really learning about the new IEP and applying what they've learned to write the new IEP. So this is going to be a journey for us throughout the course of this school year, and our coordinators and team facilitators are really leading that work and with these sessions. And one of the speed bumps or hiccups that we always have is that special education teachers are in the classroom, but they also have some really specialized skills that they need to learn about and grow with. So we're trying to always provide that balance for them because sometimes we, when we have to roll out a new IEP, we don't have some of those same choices, but pre-K through twelve, the new IEP is something that we really need to make sure we're providing that ongoing support. And that's our, our color-coded PD plan that we keep referring back to Dr. Brolsko is, every early release day says, go to the plan, look at the plan, it's there. So and then finally, we have our, some other professional development opportunities, as I mentioned, EdCamp, which is our annual. We do have that integration of departmental time, faculty meetings, common planning time. We do our learning walks where our leadership team goes to visit all of the buildings, provides feedback, we get to see, you know, what's happening in all of our classrooms. Team time, I said earlier I would mention this, it is our teacher induction and mentoring experience, and our, our course is called The Exemplary Teacher, and we have it broken down by the beginning teacher, our beginning teaching, standards one and two, standards three and four. This year, standards one and two and standards three and four are the sections that we are running. We had so few brand-new teachers that we just integrated them into a cohort with our veteran teachers, well, there are beginning teachers there and there's two or three, so they're not quite veterans yet, and our veteran mentors. And, and so what we're looking for is to provide ongoing support for our new and beginning teachers, but also to provide some new learning for our mentors who are supporting our new and beginning teachers. Rocket PD I mentioned, and then of course, our advanced coursework, and we're really trying to provide that personalized, individualized professional development. And I mentioned the data, we continuously are asking for feedback after each session at the end of each year, and that data informs our PD. And where we go? Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Stafford?
Only one quick question. How are we for staff at the new IEP, providing them, do you think we're gonna be okay? Is it gonna impact their workload?
So one of the things that Ms. Ashton and I, we've met with the STA leadership recently, and we are providing teachers who are writing IEPs, knowing that it's going to take a little bit of extra time to write an IEP now, well, until they really become familiar with this new process, so we are providing each teacher up to, I think it's two hours of additional time at an hourly rate, if they need it for this year while they are completing that and really learning as we go. So that was something that the STA requested, Meg and I both thought that that was very reasonable, accommodation we can provide, making sure that they build that comfort, that they feel the support, and as Liz mentioned, there's been a lot of training so far, the different trainings are taking place, again, some more I think today and this week, bringing some people in just to provide some support to people as they are learning this. So right now, it seems to be going quite well, and then we will, we know that it's gonna be, it's a learning curve that everyone is on, and we're here to support them while they are getting familiar with this and building that comfort in writing the new IEP.
Anyone who didn't have any questions?
That was very thorough. It's a lot of work, and that's just presenting it, that's not actually delivering it and doing it, and so I appreciate that, and I think that emphasis on a lot of that tier one instruction and how these supports are embedded in, or the instruction that all students receive is so important to do that explicitly. So that's, that is lots of good ideas to steal.
We're good sharers.
I'd just like to return right back to the original photo. I think that's great that all seven of you are participating in your doctorate program together. I think it's having your colleagues doing it with you, I think it's gonna be great. I wish you guys best of luck.
Thank you so much. It has been awesome, we're all in first course. It's, it's just that good. So it's a great team, such hard workers, and it's, it's nice to have, we have some quality time together, so lots of Zooming.
Good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, I have an agenda, I have audiovisual concerns for meetings. So I don't know if you want to start with that.
Sure, obviously, there's been a couple of meetings that I've had to participate in Zoom, and I don't know if there have been others that feel a concern that, you know, one of the things about the open meeting law and having a remote participant is that we must be heard by the general public, and we have to hear everything that's going on, that is the official, to be part of the open meeting of having a participant, remote participant. I can tell you, at times, it is extremely challenging to listen to whichever side the microphone is on, and if someone is speaking in the public, it makes it even ten times worse. So I think we need to either invest in some type of audio system, I know there's a place in Fall River that does, I think it's WOW, not to be confused with the gym, but I know that they do things, and I know in the past, we've used Access AV from New Hampshire or something like that, but it might be a new company now. In the past, I was trying to remember who did work here, or maybe it was an SATV that they did work at being part of that board as well. But I also think because this is a meeting environment, we may want to also speak to SATV so we can film things live like they do with the selectmen's meeting, not only by, I think we used to have it in the, in the school, the former school committee room where they had a direct control, maybe perhaps doing it here, and also at the middle school in the K eight side, but that's something that you would have to work with them. But meanwhile, for us, I've also heard people in a crowd, it's sometimes it's very difficult to hear. Some of us are soft-spoken, but I think we need to do something, and if someone does need to be remote, either the chair say, I can't guarantee that you're gonna be able to hear, and don't allow it, or make it completely a Zoom meeting when a member needs to use Zoom. So that would be my recommendation. And Kim, I know Mr. Fence Maker, he was on Zoom not too long ago, I think Jaleen, were you on Zoom at the time? No, okay. I don't know what your experience were, was it different than mine, or is it similar?
So I, the last K three meeting, I had COVID, so I Zoomed, didn't want to share with anybody, and it would, Mrs. Ashley had, the speaker was here and her mic was here, so I had no problem whatsoever hearing my fellow committee members, but when it was the other side talking, it, I could hear, but it wasn't as loud as, I probably missed a few words here and there, and I mean, I did hear the public, it all, again, all depends on how loudly someone is speaking. So if you have someone that is, you know, a little soft-spoken, it is very hard to hear, so I think it is worth, if we're gonna continue to keep, you know, being able to Zoom, I think it is important that maybe we have mics, even maybe one at least, if we're using a computer on one side and, you know, something on the other, so, or towards that way, so at least we can kind of pick up the problem also, because it is difficult to hear. I don't know how it was hearing me.
Oh, we can hear you fine, yeah.
But from the other end, it was difficult.
And the other thing is, I don't know how it is, you know, in the Berkeley town Access TV, sometimes certain members can't, or certain comments, it's very hard to hear, even on the recorded, on SATV or something like that, so.
Yeah, it was, I just had a similar experience with it, and I was the one where I couldn't hear enough to make sure I was answering the right question.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Because it was so, not very clear.
It sounds like it's not just, the Zoom, it's exacerbated by Zoom, right? But it's not just a Zoom issue, and I think if you watch most school committee meetings, because what else do you want to do with your time? Most other school committees, I think, have microphones for every member, for the regular attendees, and then often there's a podium or lecture and setup with a mic for the public too, so everyone can be heard. So I do think it's important to keep the meetings accessible, so whether we learn Zoom or not, I know this is an intimate space, but we want to make sure folks can hear everything. So I don't know if we could maybe ask our technology folks to see if they're, if we can figure out, I would think everyone should have a microphone, I mean, I think that's the simple answer.
Yes.
I know it's a little more set up, but.
We have had, we have had some cases where, where stuff was brought in for.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, yeah, and then when Mr. Mishell is talking too much, we can turn off his mic.
You can turn mine off, it's important.
So, all right, so we're all, I think we're all in a agree that we should probably address that, so is that something that we can work on?
Yes.
And make sure that we're complying with the meeting law.
And, and also, just as an idea, I don't want Robin to be carrying equipment from this building to the next building, we know that these are the two meeting rooms, and the reason why I mentioned perhaps asking SATV, I would like to allow other community, like other departments, they may need a meeting hall as well, I know with the town hall being down, and sometimes they only meet at the library, you know, give the other districts, you know, the opportunity to also be here if it works with SATV, you know, because it almost want, to make it not so much this particular place, but the K eight, I mean, the Somerset meetings could possibly happen in one of our locations until the Old Town Hall is open, so.
And we've all experienced, we're fortunate tonight to not have the air handlers going, but as soon as those turn on, it just makes the problem that much worse. And I, and I was just leading over to Liz and whispering too, we're also in a library, and I know acoustically, this was designed to not have sound catering very far, so we're also up against that hurdle, which, you know, we can't fix that, but we can certainly look into ways to amplify voices and make it clearer for everyone.
Great, thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Mishell. Okay, last on the agenda, public input.
Um.
For the audience, when you used, when you would have a meeting with just one school committee, it was much easier to hear when the whole school committee was over here and the audience used to sit over there. Even when we have the air handlers going, now, now when you have them going, it, sometimes it's very difficult to hear the people that are on the ends or, or Mr. Fenstmaker. But I, I just thought it was much easier to hear when the audience sat over there.
Oh, I suppose like this horseshoe, so like.
Just working.
Yeah.
I'm gonna sit at the farce shoe.
So we can, see what we can do to get amplification through more mics, more equipment, and also maybe see if that addresses it, or if we also maybe need to reconfigure the layout, especially for joint meetings or, okay. Anything else? Any public input? No? Okay.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the K eight school committee meeting.
So.
Second. We have a motion made by Ms. Gore, seconded by Mr. Gore. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you.
We're gonna take just a brief moment and we will continue with unfinished business for the region. Okay, thank you. We reconvene the Somerset-Berkley Regional School Committee meeting at this time. The next item on the agenda for the region under unfinished business or votes on the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Resolution. These are for support, opposition, or amendment. There are several of these resolutions. If it pleases the committee, I think what I'd like to do is just go through Resolution One, the title, and then if someone wants to make a motion, either in support or opposition, we'll do that. If we need discussion, we can have it. Otherwise, we'll vote and we'll move through.
Or you can alter it.
Or you can amend it, if anyone has an amendment they'd like to suggest. Does that sound like the plan?
Yep.
Okay, the first resolution is for the development of an alternative to the high stakes MCAS test.
May I make a motion that we support?
I'd want to make a discussion. I'd ask to have one of the resolutions added, one of the,
Wear your eyes.
On the first page, the last item. Therefore, the resolve that the AMI has urged Massachusetts to test, testing effectively immediately, you know, taking the MCAS off next week. Right. I would like to have that removed. My motion.
All right, so first we had a motion for Mr. Machado.
Mm-hmm, but it was a seconded.
Okay, not seconded. So now we have a motion by Mr. Fenstmaker.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's okay. You didn't hear Mr. Machado?
How do you live to your side?
So Mr. Fenstmaker's motion is to amend Resolution One. And the amendment would be to strike the final.
Final condition on the first call.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay. The next resolution, Resolution Two is to increase the compulsory attendance age. We have a motion.
I make a motion to not.
To oppose, yes.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barrera to oppose this resolution is seconded by Mr. Machado. Is there anything on discussion?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Machado and I had attended the Zoom. I don't know if anybody else was able to. They did say in this, they're gonna try to get both of these together to be done at once, to be passed as a combined, unless someone asked for them to be separated. They're doing that with a couple of these that are kind of similar. So I just wanted to put that out there for who are delegates that I would request that we ask that they be separated and not be voted to together.
They want to combine one and two?
They want to do a vote for the two together. So you're passing either both or not passing, unless someone asks for them to be heard separately.
I was gonna mention that, like we did at the last meeting. I, I think when you have 11 resolutions, they're trying to do like security, certain things in blocks. So I think they're trying to avoid what happened last year. But unfortunately, every article, every resolution has its own merit. It should be voted on in its own merit. So I would recommend that in the beginning of the conference, when they decide to stop doing this, that you stand up and say, no, let's vote this. Our committee voted individually, so should we, type of thing.
Are there any strikes that did we vote?
No, we didn't.
No, we didn't. So we have a motion and a second on Resolution Two to increase, the motion is to oppose the resolution to increase the compulsory attendance age, which the public information would be from 16 to 18. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. The next resolution, number three, is regarding the safe storage of firearms. Essentially would require the school district to communicate with families about the safe storage of firearms. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to oppose.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Machado and seconded by Ms. Barrera. Is there anything on discussion?
This is one that they're also trying to combine the three and four. The reason I'm opposing is, well, I feel it's very important that firearms are stored properly. I don't think it's the superintendent's job to do that, send out something to the schools. They're not asking for, you know, unified message from everybody. They're just kind of saying each district can do what they want. So that would be why I vote to oppose.
Yeah, just to go as Ms. Barrera was saying, you know, each, the MSA, the M.A.S.S., M.A.C.C., Jesus, is basically asking school committees to ask their superintendent to write a, you know, an education piece. When during the meeting, I asked, shouldn't that be coming from the AG's office and we just follow, send it to all the families? No, because, or M.A.C.C. should be coming up with something. I get very nervous when M.A.C.C. is putting a resolution because of one community or one district. And it's not, every district can do whatever. I hate to say this, the M.A.C.C. or the district. We already have that, right? We can do it on our own. We don't need their permission to be told what to do. It's either gonna be as a, here's what M.A.C.C. recommends, now what each, each different, you know, we don't need their permission. So that's what I would recommend is say to them, we don't need your permission to do something like this if we choose to do it.
There's no further discussion. All those in favor? This is to vote in opposition to Resolution Three.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next resolution is regarding school bus, armed surveillance act enforcement penalties.
I'll make a motion, I'd like to entertain a, I'd like to make a motion that we oppose this.
Second. Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Machado and it's seconded by Ms. Barrera to oppose this resolution. Is there anything on discussion?
There's, there's no mechanism of funding it. Not that I'm against it, but it's, who's gonna pay for it?
This involves cameras and buses and there's an enforcement action here. There's equipment and there's a lot of things that are.
Anyone else will have to, some that own their own buses and some that don't. So it'd be kind of hard to make sure it's univiable.
Anything else on discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of opposing Resolution Four?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. The next resolution, Resolution Five, is aligning the taxing authority with the required local contribution.
I'd like to entertain a motion to oppose number five, resolution number five.
Second. So there's a motion by Mr. Machado, seconded by Ms. Barrera to oppose Resolution Five, which would essentially remove the two and a half percent, the prop two and a half cap on increasing local taxes. So. We have a motion to oppose. Is there anything on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next resolution, number six, is to support legislation to improve the fiscal health of rural school districts. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to support Article Number Six.
A motion by Mr. Machado, seconded by Ms. Barrera to support Resolution Number Six. Is there anything on discussion? I think I would just add that this resolution involves the state funding to support rural districts as opposed to the previous resolution, which would put more of a burden on individual towns and municipalities. If I'm, I don't want to oversimplify, but I think that's a crucial difference, yes. Okay, so the motion on the floor is to support Resolution Six. If there's nothing else on discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Resolution Number Seven is next, that Resolution to fully adjust Chapter Seventy Eight for inflation.
I'd like to make a motion to support Number Seven.
Second. Motion by Mr. Machado and seconded by Ms. Barrera. Is there anything on discussion? No one's opposed to getting more. State money to help keep up with inflation? Okay, if there's nothing else on discussion, all those in favor of supporting Resolution Seven?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So voted. The next resolution, number eight, is regarding capital funding for non-regional school districts with high transportation costs. Do we have a motion?
Just for the record, the K eight had discussed this and we actually were, had no action because we were tied two to two. So just, just to let everyone know about that. But I'll, I'll entertain a motion to oppose Resolution Number Eight.
We have a motion to oppose. Is there a second? Second. Second by Ms. Barrera. Is there anything on discussion? Hearing none. What's a, what's a? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next resolution, number nine, is regarding the MSBA, the Mass School Building Administration, Association of Grants Evaluation for Chapter Seventy Four Programs. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to oppose Resolution Number Nine.
Second. There's a motion by Mr. Machado and seconded by Ms. Barrera. Is there anything on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of opposing Resolution Number Nine?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. The next resolution is number 10. This is a resolution to expand the capacity of Chapter Seventy Four vocational technical programs. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to oppose Number Ten.
Second. A motion by Mr. Machado and seconded by Ms. Barrera. Is there anything on discussion? I just have one question from the folks who, who do I know? Is this limited to vocational and technical schools? Or is it also applied to like a Chapter, a Chapter Seventy Four program that might be, for instance, in a comprehensive school?
I, I believe they were just talking about vocational schools.
Okay. In that case, I know how to go. Anything else on discussion?
It was, yeah.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of opposing Resolution Ten?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Okay, those are, that concludes the new resolutions. And then next, we have several expiring resolutions. Does the committee want to take them one by one or do we have a?
I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve all the expired ones.
Second.
Also.
Support the continuation of all expiring resolutions. Is there anyone who wants to pull anything out? Okay, in that case, we'll entertain it. So you want to give a motion? So we have a motion to support the continuation of all expiring resolutions. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Barrera. Anything on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. I think that's all of them. Thank you, everyone. Okay. The next item on the agenda would be to consider appointing an MASC Resolutions alternate voting delegate.
I am for K three eight, the alternate. Okay. So I don't know if that puts me off the. Can you be the alternate for both in supplement? Well, if you both, then it shows that I have two votes. That's the only thing.
Two votes, we have two voters, right?
Well, we only appointed Ms. Andrews. We're saying that should we appoint a alternate just in case? Not a bad idea, just gonna say, because life, so. Because Mrs. Ashley was for K three eight and I am for the alternate. I'll be the alternate for K three eight because I will be there.
Okay. I don't know if I need to, I don't think there's a, I don't, I think there's a problem with you being the alternate for both?
The only problem would be is if both didn't show up.
Because then I can't pull it twice. That would be the only issue.
Okay. Is there anyone else who's planning to be there for the presidential? Mr. Fenstmaker? He thought he was out of it. Will Mr. Fenstmaker be willing to be the alternate?
Like the understudy.
That's the Friday one.
That is Friday, correct, yes. I'd be the alternate alternate. I mean, if one of them doesn't show up and I'm there, I don't mind, so.
Okay, okay.
The alternate to the alternate.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fenstmaker. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Fenstmaker as the MASC Resolutions alternate voting delegate.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Barrera, seconded by Mr. Machado. Anything on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I'm the alternate for the alternate.
You can't oppose that motion. Okay, so voted. Next on the, thank you, Mr. Fenstmaker. Next on the agenda, updates from Berkeley and Somerset Public Schools. Let's start with Berkeley.
Let's start with Berkeley. I don't have much from our last meeting. We are just three weeks out on our school building project vote, November fifth. We have lots of tours scheduled if anybody wants to see our lovely community school.
So it's the vote for funding? What are you?
We are voting to approve the project, yes.
You vote.
So the project, the total project is just under eighty-nine, nope, just under ninety million, eighty-nine million. Berkeley's portion would be fifty million. The MSBA would reimburse us the other portion, which is the forty million. But we have a couple of, we're kind of in the, so we have November fifth and then we have eleven, special town meeting on eleven fourteen for our second vote to completely approve the project. So we have tours scheduled, virtual meetings in the next couple of weeks. It's home stretch, kind of, just trying to get it, get it done. But that's really what we've got going on there.
That's a lot, isn't it?
There is, well, with that, yes.
You wanna come see the leaky school?
Yeah, you can see our leaky, our, our, yep, busted windows, our floors, the water comes up from underneath cuz it's just like a sinking mud. It's great. It's sixty-something years old. It's just, it's time. I'm sure you guys are
Yeah, you know, the thing is, the taxpayers of Berkeley have an opportunity to almost getting matching dollars, you know, you know, that's something that's, doesn't come very often. So the thought of having forty-five percent actually paid by the states it's a no-brainer, you know.
Yeah, I mean, and, and the cost of the repairs, it has to be done. There are things that, it's beyond its life expectancy. So there are things that have to be done and the cost to do those things that need to be done are gonna be far beyond what the, this project total is and the reimbursement fee, which we will not get. So fingers crossed that everybody sees it that way.
It's interesting just to see how much the cost changes over time.
Yeah.
So this building, the average price to construct a new school now is twice as much as what it was when this one was constructed. So this eighty-million-dollar project would be, you know, one fifty, one sixty.
Yeah, and, and that's kind of some folks are saying, because we just have the B P project that we have to put our portion into. So there's a lot that's happening for us all at once that's going to increase taxes for folks and it, it is unfortunate. But if we do the, kick the can down the road and get, try to get back into the project at a later date, we're only talking about practically double in costs in the time that hopefully the M S B A would put us back into the project. So unfortunately, now's the time to do it. It just falls at a sort of an inconvenient time for Berkeley and what we've got going on right now. But it has to be done, so. Gonna figure it out.
Thank you. Somerset updates. Sure, you go ahead.
At the last meeting, we, we had students come in. They gave us a great report about how they're all adjusting to the new school. And it was, it's nice that, you know, that they're looking forward, they enjoy starting the day every, at the home room where before it wasn't that way. There, they, we did approve the D C trip. We said goodbye or we are in the process of saying goodbye to two retirees, Luanne Prattis and Teresa Nunes. We did approve, I don't know if we approved, but we did have a discussion on middle school cheer team transportation. This was something that the administration worked on. We decided not to put any, any special articles. We did get a, a build-in update for the middle school, which is obviously up and running. We had a staff reports. We did get an update on our chase windows. We are still working on a capital plan and we voted on a resolution, like I mentioned. We basically voted exactly the way that we voted today, except for number eight. It was a no action cuz we didn't get a tiebreaker. And we were very fortunate to get a donation from, for a Trumper and and I, Trumper.
Trumper.
Trumper. Trumper, maybe I did. It's late. And, and we did also have some public input regarding some capital plans regarding walls at North from a public attendee. That's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Machado. Next on the agenda, topics not anticipated by the chair. I have none. Action items for future meetings.
I have a couple.
Okay.
One, I'm not a hundred percent sure if this is corrected now, but I'm not sure if we ever had a plaque made from Mr. for the tennis courts. So if we could look into that and perhaps get some you know, pricing so we can approve that. So, and if there are any other, I know we already did the, the pack, but just in case if there is any others that we need to do. And also, I know I used to enjoy this quite often when I was a K twelve member and that was meeting with our friends from Berkeley School Committee. I was just wondering if we could potentially have a meeting with the Berkeley School Committee, just so, cuz I don't even, besides Jaleen, I don't know any of them.
I'm not that smart.
Perhaps, you know, and, and perhaps, you know, you know, I still cherish my friendship with Chris and that all started with those meetings. So just wondering, you know, it'd be nice, A, for them to know who we are and for us to know them. So perhaps maybe ask if they're interested in a joint meeting.
Would you like me to present that question to them or do you wanna do it in a more official?
You are a representative.
All right, it's me. See if they're interested in talking. Anyone have any other questions?
Just thinking that they might be thinking about how, where would you meet, which location?
We'll go visit them.
The only thing that I think we need to get moving on for this committee too is capital plan, but specifically where it relates to the turf and the track replacement. Maybe we got some guidance from Desi about what type of plan we would need to present to them in order to be able to perhaps have some additional financial options. I don't know that those would be adequate to cover the cost of what we need to do, but I think that that is something we need to start. So maybe at the next meeting, we can flesh out a plan for that moving forward. We need to do specifics on the hard budget, but we wanted to give Ms. Palanin the opportunity to get acquainted with us before we hit her with that, but I think, I think we can address it.
I was actually going to ask if we can put that on our next agenda item. Actually, I reached out earlier today to a company to conduct an assessment. The same one who did it for us in early twenty twenty. So hopefully for our next meeting, I'll have that report to share as, as the first step through having that discussion.
And, and if it's all right, perhaps what are the pros and cons of grass and turf these days? You know, I'm just curious, you know. I believe last night turf was the ideal, but I'm just wondering if any other districts are changing back to grass or anything like that, just out of curiosity.
This pros and cons.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, it's, there's, there's no. Okay, any other items to future meetings? Great. And with that, the next item on the agenda is to consider approval of minutes of prior meetings. If they ever need to pull anything out, in that case, I would entertain a motion to accept the open and executive session minutes of ten September twenty twenty-four as presented.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Machado, seconded by Ms. Ferrera. Anything on discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. One more call for public input. In that case, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of or any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements to consider the release, reduction, withholding of September ten, twenty twenty-four executive session and pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Somerset Teachers Association, and I would note that the committee would not return to open session.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Machado, seconded by Ms. Ferrera. If we need a roll call for this, a roll call. Mr. Machado?
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera?
Aye.
Mr. Fenstermaker? Ms. Solomon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And once again, I'll reiterate, the committee will not return to open session.